Hi, I'm Samantha Anderson, Director of Communications for Newton Public Schools, and I'm here with Superintendent Van Rankin. And we're just going to go over some of what happened at last night's board meeting, as well as just answer any questions you may have either about the board meeting or anything else to the best of our ability. First of all, the board did decide on a gating criteria all the way to winter break. What did they decide?
We're going to be what would be considered our traditional orange mode, which essentially is K through six, they will be in hybrid. Seven through 12 will be remote. With the exception of Opportunity Academy. Opportunity Academy at that secondary level, they're going to be in a hybrid mode of operation. If you might remember from our previous adjustments that have been made to the criteria, they were going to be full 100% onsite until we were in the red. But they're going to actually go half day once again. That age level of student, we do know that, you know, based upon the science, there's more transmission of the disease. And so that does help the staff, help protect our staff and our students, obviously. At the pre-K level, it will still be 100% full in person. And as you might remember, we did have to go remote in that facility based upon staffing issues. The one thing about doing this until Christmas, it gives certainty to families, to our staff, which is really important. And it also, I have the ability based upon staffing issues, which we've had to endure a few times to have to go remote in a building when we can't staff based upon quarantines or isolations or cases.
Okay, and something exciting, there will be some COVID testing opportunities at USD373. Can you let us know what goes into that?
Right now, we have an agreement with Wichita State University Molecular Testing Lab. And this was something that actually sponsored by, actually a function of some work done at the state level with some CARES dollars to get some surveillance testing going. And we're going to open this up to our staff initially. We wanted to be able to provide that opportunity for staff to, just from that surveillance capacity, I mean, that way we get kind of an idea of the actual presence in our community. Without mask testing and then tracing in isolation, it's kind of hard to stay ahead of this a little bit. We've been having to react quite a bit. We will start this sometime after the Thanksgiving holiday. I'm actually working now on some consent forms and some other things, but we have all the paperwork done. Other than our own logistical things, we will, it's a saliva-based PCR test with a high sensitivity, which we're real excited about. It'll be voluntary on the part of staff. The goal would then be to maybe look at helping students and families out. Maybe down the road, there are some other options that might pop up for that on our part. But we're real excited about this. It is at no cost to the district as a result of some of the CARES Act dollars that were set up for this purpose. So that's kind of exciting for us. I'm real excited about that. We would love probably to start out testing staff a couple of times a week, those that wanted it. There's a 24-hour turnaround time. And it's just going to allow some peace of mind, hopefully, in the process of that.
Great. And Chisholm Middle School did have a presentation about some of the changes they've made so far this year and where they were going. Would you mind just going over some of the things that might be new for Chisholm parents?
Well, yeah. When we when we looked at the end of quarter grades and some other things and some feedback from parents and stuff, we are very aware that things aren't going real well out there. Mr. Meninga presented to the board, did a great job. If you get the opportunity, go through that portion of the meeting to listen to what Mr. Meninga said. The topic on the agenda was actually Summit Learning, because as most of you know, Summit Learning comes with some baggage. And we just kind of wanted to lay out to the Board of Education some of the struggles that we're having right now in that regard, and some of the adjustments they're making. Because not all of the issues are associated with Summit, frankly. Some of the things that they are looking to do, they are adjusting the way that they are requiring now students, when they are offsite, to be synchronous, which means that they're going to log in at the same time of their normal class period with their teachers. And there'll be some direct instruction of some sort on most days delivered during that timeframe. So they'll follow that same bell schedule. And that will also be a function of attendance. Within our student information system, the way attendance was working for remote, it was almost a little bit in arrears. The way we can do it now with them logging in every period, those same robo-calls will go out if your kid's not there. So that'll help with some of the attendance issues that we have. Another thing that they are going to engage in is on the Wednesdays, they're calling it Workshop Wednesdays. And what they plan to do, which is really a really awesome feature in the Summit platform, is that they plan to use student performance data to meaningfully group students into workshops based upon deficiencies related to their academic performance. That's a lot of educational stuff to basically say what they're going to do is figure out where the kids are struggling specifically and try to address those through some micro-workshops, some direct instruction that might get those kids over the hump. That's been one thing that within the implementation of this that might not have been as much of a focus as it's going to be, because that is one of the powers of the platform. So we're real excited about that, because they'll be able to use that data to inform instruction. Once again, a real powerful tool. They're also going to have more instructional videos available for students within the Canvas platform, which will be a positive. A thing that's a positive until kids get caught up, and then we need to make some adjustments. One of those is for elective classes, when they're not onsite, all right, it's going to be an optional thing for parents. Now, that's a little controversial for some, I understand. It's not that we don't value those electives. We do value those. We just also know that in terms of the core content areas, our kids are so far behind when you look at the data that we really need to allow them that opportunity to catch up. So that's going to be another thing that they have made in terms of an adjustment. So another thing that they're going to do is regularly report back to the Board of Education on the progress, academic progress of kids. Once again, within that Summit platform, it is much easier to see that than really even in a student gradebook, because all you see in a student information gradebook are grades. And grades don't necessarily get you down to an objective level in relation to academic performance. So we think these changes will make a difference. But we also know that there are concerns out there about the platform on the part of a lot of parents, and we're going to keep working on those issues this year. You know, as a superintendent, they came from a district where we did use that Summit platform. You know, one thing I will say as parents, we need to do a better job of informing you how to really engage in that content with your students to where you can help your students be able to ask really good questions as it relates to where they're really struggling. Because if you're like me, when I was a kid, when parents would say, "How you doing? I'm fine," or "You're struggling?" No. Even if I was, they'd say, "Okay, what are you struggling on?" You'd say, "Everything." Well, within a system like this, you can drill it down as a parent, as our teachers should be, you know, to where they are actually struggling. It should be more diagnostic in that capacity. We need to help you as parents with that. We've got a Zoom session coming, I think, Sam, in December.
Yep, December 14th at noon over lunch.
And what we plan to do then is kind of go over that. If I were a parent and I could spend time with each one of you, I would show you exactly how I would ask those questions, looking at that information on my kid to allow them to be able to progress academically. And it's not that we didn't want to share that information. It's just that where I was at before, we took a pretty hard approach in that regard, because it's not that our teachers aren't working hard. We all know that they're working really hard. It's just sometimes you've just got to work a little differently. If we could help you, parents and kids, work a little differently, you'll make a lot more gains. So we're excited about how some of these changes are going to allow your students to progress academically.
All right. And just to clarify, the lunch Zoom will not be on Facebook. It'll be more of a casual setting where people can interact and ask questions. We emailed a link probably a week, week and a half ago. If you can't find it and want to join your Santa Fe or Chisholm parent, you can just email me at info@usd373.org. I feel like I say that a lot.
And that's another thing, another point to make probably, Sam, is that, you know, the platform isn't just at Chisholm. So we're looking at this from a systemic perspective in grades five through eight to make sure that we have some points of performance that are consistent throughout the district that we can frankly measure. So it's not an isolated thing in one building.
All right. We have quite a few questions come in while we were chatting. One question I saw a bunch is, why did the board decide to go with regular orange instead of the modified orange we went with last time?
Well, when you look at the trends, just region-wide, statewide, nationwide, you know, case counts are going down. We think of the things that are going to take place over Thanksgiving. You know, we will reinforce over and over again, please alter your Thanksgiving plans, you know, to stay within your own bubble. But we know that that's not going to happen in all cases. We're also saying social distance whenever possible. Wear your mask, wash your hands. Because we know that after the break, we'll probably have more cases that will show up. When we look at the current cases in our buildings, you know, there's not a ton of cases. We have nine active staff cases, and we have 15 active student cases. Now, when we start talking about quarantines and isolations right now, we've got 210 student quarantines or isolations. And we have, let me pull this up for staff here. Right now, we've got, I think it's 62 staff isolations or quarantines. We want to do our best to mitigate that spread of the virus. And in going a hybrid at that elementary level, you know, we'll be able to do that a little bit more. And obviously, the same thing at grade seven, seven and eight, which we weren't in that mode before. You know, that's once again, when you start talking about the age, where the transmission seems to be a little bit more apparent. We're looking at that middle secondary level especially. So we want to make sure we protect our students and our staff as much as possible. And that's the main reason for that recommendation.
Okay, and this is another question we got when we went all the way to Thanksgiving break. Why did we decide to go for such a long period of time instead of the two weeks or the one week?
It's a three-week period. You know, I mean, it's one more week than what we had done before. And really, a lot of the feedback we're getting is, stop changing so much. And that three-week period, you know, that's a constant. You know that it's going to remain that way. So for your family planning, for our teacher planning, it will be a constant, all right? The only reason we'll close one of the facilities or grow remote is because we can't staff it. So that'll be the only normacy that maybe you're going to have in your life over the course of the next three weeks. You know, we're just as concerned after the Christmas holiday, you know, about what the case counts might be and stuff. So, you know, we'll keep putting that message out about the social distancing, the washing your hands, and the masking, because we really need to, we need to work as best we can to block the spread until vaccines are widely available. One thing we are going to also look at doing at that elementary level to maybe adjust that model after the Christmas holiday, especially at the elementary level, to where we can more adequately, or actually just adequately, social distance in the classroom. That with the model that we adopted in the fall, it's really not possible. What we will be doing is reducing the amount of exposure in terms of the number of days for students and staff. But social distancing in the classroom, based upon the way we have it set up, is just not as possible as we'd like for it to be.
Okay. And do you know, and this may be a good question for Zoom, if you don't, if there's a plan to get one-on-one instruction at Chisholm for students that may have problems, I'm guessing they just need to talk to their teacher, but...
Yeah, they need to talk to their teachers. But once again, I mean, that's the function of, or the reason to have all that data at your fingertips. There should be workshops going on for these kids that are struggling. You know, kids shouldn't be taking their content assessment six, seven times without you knowing, as a parent, there's some direct instruction happening, some sort of remediation that's taking place. And so those are some of the things that need to kind of be ramped up a little bit on our part. Once again, I'm not trying to throw teachers under a bus or, you know, or anything like that. It's just, there's some system things that we need to make some adjustments to to ensure that we're doing this with efficacy. You know, I can't say that kind of stuff. I try to be careful and not to throw people under buses, because our teachers are working so hard up there. But we just need to retool this a little bit, so it'll be better for your kids. If that's not happening, reach out to your teacher. If your teacher doesn't respond, reach out to your principal. If your principal doesn't respond, reach out to me, all right? Because that's how we get these things kind of, I believe in systems of mutual accountability and support. All right, I'd rather provide support, but if we have to provide accountability, that's why I'm hired, all right, is to make sure that we have that kind of stuff in place. It's not fun on the accountability side, but that doesn't matter either. We're here to help educate kids and support families. So, you know, follow up with that teacher. You're not getting anywhere. Follow up with that principal. You're not getting anywhere. Give my office a call, and we'll do something. Something will happen.
Are there certain metrics or data that you can pull from Summit that shows, you know, how successful students are being in the program, and is it evaluated?
See, I think this is one of the things, and once again, I'm trying to be really careful here. Yes, there is a multitude of different data pieces in there. From anything from, you know, how many goals per week are kids setting in the platform? That's one of the data points that's real important. Goals are, you know, I wish they would call them tasks, but, because that's essentially what they are. What do I plan to do this week in order to be successful? You folks that are involved in that Summit Learning platform, you've seen that line as it goes from left to right when things are due, all right? But if your kids know something is coming up, they put a little forethought into that, working with their teachers through that mentoring process, and establishing those tasks or goals for the week. That should be happening on a weekly basis, okay? As a teacher or as an administrator, myself included, I have access to, you know, how kids are doing on those content assessments, how many times they've taken it, and also at the objective level, what their performance levels are, to where that data can be used to meaningfully group students in a classroom to provide support at the objective level, okay? And that's one of the things I think we just need to retool a little bit. And that short, that small adjustment, I think, will have a huge return on investment. So it's a very data-rich platform, very data-rich, more so than anything that we're used to. And it has some exciting possibilities for, you know, for schools.
If a student has, or if a parent has concerns about their students, especially the younger ones that maybe are on an IEP, is the best way to get help to contact their building, to contact their...
Always the best part, place to start in any level is at the lowest level possible. So if it's something in your, with your classroom teacher, whether it's your special education teacher, your regular education teacher, start there. You know, this is that chain of command stuff. And I don't like hiding behind it or using it as a weapon to not do work. But I do believe we need to follow that, because as we all know, problems are best addressed at that lowest level possible. If you don't get that assistance you need, or even if you're just not happy, you then go to the building principal. And once again, if that's not working there, you come to me. Now, and if that doesn't work, you go to the Board of Education. Sometimes what's happening, though, a lot of folks don't even go to the teacher or the principal or the suit, they just go right to the board. And the board members, they have no idea what's going in that classroom. I frankly have no idea really what's going on in that classroom. Your principals have somewhat of an idea, but not much. Your classroom teacher knows everything that's going on in that classroom. So we really want you to follow that, so that, you know, you've covered all your bases at each lowest level. You may find, however, that you get the same answer at every level. And that's just when you have, we have a disagreement about what needs to take place, and that's just life. But most of that stuff, I think, that we can work through if we kind of go through that chain as much as possible.
Somebody was curious, so at the high school, if there's students that are struggling logging in or tuning in or turning in assignments, are there people going around trying to check in with them, like maybe counselors or other staff?
Well, they're trying to do a better job when the kids are offsite, of following up on those kids that are struggling academically. You know, the problem with being offsite is that just because you have a phone doesn't mean you'll answer it. Or just because you have an email address doesn't mean that you'll read the email or respond to the email. I do know a lot of our administrators do porch visits. They follow up and try to make contact. I will also say, that's not always successful either. So this whole pandemic is a mess for everyone, not just in education, but especially in education, because as most of you parents know, especially at the secondary level, not all of our kids that are struggling really, really embrace school in the first place. And if they have the opportunity to not engage, they sometimes don't engage. And so it just makes it even more difficult. So once again, if you're struggling, reach out to the teacher, the principal, myself, and we'll see what we can do in that regard. Our social workers do a great job, from what I hear and understand, and the things that I've seen in my short time here, are really trying to assist kids that are struggling as well. So there are supports up there. Please, as a parent, you know, please be reaching out to try to engage those. And as a student, if you're struggling, I encourage you to do the same.
Right, and someone was wondering if Santa Fe and Chisholm staff sometimes work together on Summit?
You know, I can't really answer to that at this point. I'm going to have to probably say not as much as they should. But once again, this year has been such an odd year. I don't know what they've done in years past. That's going to be one of the things that we'll talk about is this systemic approach to making sure that that implementation has been done well, five through eight. So just stay tuned, we'll see what happens.
And then someone was wondering, do we have the data? I know sometimes we have the student cases at like each level, so elementary, high school, middle school. Do we have that right now?
Yeah, I do. I'd have to calculate. I won't give you any building numbers, obviously, that could potentially be identifiers. Let me see here. Right now, I've got seven secondary active cases, two middle school active cases, and... Hold on. Math on the spot is always fun. I've got six elementary cases. Hopefully, that added up to 15. Okay, hopefully, that added up to 15 at the student level. At the staff level, right now, we're looking at almost all of our cases at the staff level are at the elementary level. When I say staff, you have to remember, that can include pares, aides, teachers, office staff, counselors, social workers, bus drivers.
District.
Veterans, district office, yeah. It'll be within those categories.
And then someone did ask, why Summit's being used in the middle schools but not at the high school?
That's a question I can't answer. I wasn't here when it was put in during that time. I will say honestly, as an answer for that, and it's legitimate, when the districts engaged in redesign, when the schools engaged in redesign, they did so at the building level, okay? When redesign was first rolled out three, four years ago, I was at Twin Valley. We were one of the Mercury schools, one of the Mercury districts. But really, we were one among two Mercury schools within that group of seven districts. One of the, I think, the issues that the state had initially and that they're trying to overcome a little, is when they put these, put redesign in place, they kind of did it at the building level only and didn't involve the district as much. And that's one thing in my previous district that I frankly wouldn't allow, because that was one of the reasons I became a superintendent, was to change, you know, how we're doing education at all levels. So to the defense of the district, that's just kind of how that was set up to begin with. We are going to be looking at a more of a systemic approach at all levels with school improvement. So I'm not saying Summit Learning is going to the high school at all. I'm not saying that, so don't freak out, parents, okay? But what I am saying, you know, personalized learning is one of the four pillars of redesign, and something that I think, if you stand back and think about it, Amit, each one of you, as parents, would want, you know, your individual needs taken care of on the part for each one of your kids. So those are things that we'll be discussing, but that won't happen overnight. So we've got a lot of work to do. I want to get through the pandemic first before we really start putting a lot of eggs in different baskets, but we want to take more of a systemic approach, pre-K through 12, in terms of personalized learning.
And I believe the only buildings in our district that have fully redesigned would be Slate Creek, Chisholm, and Santa Fe, so the others...
Top braces in the process.
Yeah, top braces in the process.
Yes.
So, yeah. But everybody will by 2024.
It's not a mandate. It's not a mandate at all. I mean, that's where accreditation is going, you know, honestly, some way or somehow. And it's long overdue in the state of Kansas. It's long overdue nationally in terms of the education system. We have some things to work on.
And then someone wanted to know if it's a possibility to have all the assignments for Chisholm in one location? I think that's more of a, maybe a teacher going back through that, go to teacher building.
It's more of a teacher building. Honestly, they're trying to have consistency at the building level. Canvas should be your go-to as far as that goes. I do know that they've worked with our technology integration specialist, Megan Nagel, on, you know, just some uniformity there to ensure that parents and kids don't get so confused. But you know, I'll go back to, you know, when I was teaching chemistry, I did things different in my chemistry class than the history class did, than the English class did, than the shop class did too. So, you know, part of that is just being adaptable and flexible. But yeah, it could sure help to have a little more consistency there, probably.
And then someone was wondering if the data was based off of the state or the county as far as our gating criteria goes?
It's based off of the county. It's based off of county numbers and local numbers. And so our attendance is obviously local. Our average daily attendance and membership. The county numbers are from the KDHE site, but only as it relates to Harvey County, with the exception of the hospital criteria, that's the South Central region. So the numbers that we try to pull off of the Harvey County Health Department are for the trend, because we kind of have two ways in which we've calculated that over time. I had to kind of sneak that in late, because they weren't showing up on the Harvey County site until right before the board meeting. I don't know why, maybe it was just user error on my part. That's usually what happens with technology. But those are all from the KDHE site, except for those that I mentioned.
And we're going to have one more call for questions. In the meantime, I saw a question about specific buildings, case numbers, but we're not releasing those to protect identities. So, oh, one just popped up. Oh, and then one other thing that we talked about in the board meeting is next link. Can you explain what that is in case people are wondering?
Yeah, Harvey County was among the counties that are considered underserved from an internet perspective in the rural areas especially. Next Link was awarded one of the grants as a part of some of the CARES Act at the state level to be able to provide those services. I believe they're out of Oklahoma, Oklahoma and/or Texas. But they have established themselves in several rural communities in Kansas. In the Walton, at the Walton site, they're going to use the existing tower that we have there that used to be what we broadcast our wireless internet to. And they're going to put a device up on their town, on that tower of ours, that will provide internet access to families within the communities, which is kind of nice, because it brings another competitor to the area. One of the things that we get out of it, which is also really, really a positive, is that we have an internet backup over at Walton now. If those of you that belong in the Walton School community, if you remember this past fall, a trash truck hit a pole that knocked out the internet service during that family engagement time. If that happens again, we'll have an internet backup service over there as well. And it's also going to give a reduction to staff members for a period of one year, $10 off of their monthly bill and a 50% installation reduction. So that's kind of an exciting thing that will be brought to the community. And that's a function... And that's a, that's a function of too, which is, is important to highlight. The only reason, you know, you get hundreds of emails per day of, of vendors and things of that nature. But the Harvey County Economic Development Group reached out to me about the possibility of them contacting me, or I probably would not have read the email. So, uh, that's an example of the relationships doing something positive, for sure.
Okay, um, a last couple of questions. Someone wants to know, um, what, at what point do we start thinking about another bond? In case we weren't thinking about enough right now.
I am not even gonna go there. I'm sorry, uh, to that individual who has asked that question. I would rather get through a pandemic before worrying about a bomb. That's something that, that's, that's, that's not, you know. That's something that the board will have to decide. We'll do it the politically correct way, how about that? Yeah, I mean, we have facilities issue, we have infrastructure issues. That'll have to happen eventually, um, but not this year, I guarantee you.
And then if a, if a family member's not getting the answers they want on an IEP, or getting an IEP test. Would it be the same, they go to the teacher, they go to the principal, they go to the, um, to you, and then they go to the board? Is that the same?
In this case, if it's a special education instance, they would go to the, the teacher, the principal, and then contact the, uh, Special Education Director, uh, and then go to me. So there's that other step in there.
Okay.
That person, that person needs to be involved in that loop.
Alright, I think we got all the questions. If we missed your question, feel free to email me at info@usd373.org. Or user feedback forms that are on all of the websites, it's a really quick way to get answers. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Just a couple of things, uh, you know, socially distanced, wear your mask, be careful over Thanksgiving. We want to be able to have our kids in school as much as possible. We know too, that we want our kids to be able to participate in athletics and activities. You know, with us being in Orange right now, there are no spectators. So for example, for the play that's gonna be conducted this weekend. They're gonna do, be videotaping and just giving, uh, copies of those to the families. So, so think about that as you process your, your Thanksgiving plans. And I know it stinks, folks, but, but we just gotta hang on until we can, we can get to the vaccines to where, you know, we'll get to that herd immunity based upon that vaccine. And also, have a happy Thanksgiving, and I know it's gonna be a different one for all of you. But enjoy the time that you do have with your family and/or friends. And, um, we'll talk to you in about a minute.
Thanks, have a great, have a great break.